A special meeting of the Water Pollution Control Authority and regular town council meeting to water for Tuesday, April 2, 2019, at the North Branford Intermountain School Cafeteria at 7:17 PM. We'll start first with salute to the flag. Roll call?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Candelaora?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Councilor Big Neil?
Here.
And Councilor Zampiano?
Here. Motion to approve the minutes of the March 19, 2019, town council meeting?
Double.
Second. Discussion, correction. Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Moving to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. First item is correspondence, citizens' statements. Nothing listed. Move into unfinished business, nothing listed, new business. There's no new business. Citizens' statements and petitions under Water Pollution Control Authority. Seeing none, we'll move into the regular town council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions, Economic Development Commission.
I was unable to attend the meeting last night, but there is the monthly report in our packet starting on page 16, and I'm not sure if Mike has anything to add.
No, I was unable to attend as well.
Thank you. Park and Rec Commission?
No meeting.
Police Commission?
Next meeting is April 8 at 6:00 PM.
Fire Commission?
No meeting.
Board of Education and Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yeah, the last two things they did was they approved the Resubdivision on Setoka Road, and they approved the health facility down on 139 at the Branford Line with waiting for the state highway approval.
Thank you. East Shore Health District? Next is North Branford Police, Fire, and Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee?
The next meeting is April 8 at 6:30 PM at the Police Department.
Last is Finance Subcommittee?
There was no meeting since our last one.
Moving to the Town Manager Report. Update on Plan of Conservation Development?
Yes, we have a memo prepared by the Town Planner, Karen Duquez, indicating the summary of the survey results are attached in your packet for tonight. The next update is scheduled for April 11, which will be the workshop right here in the cafeteria at 6:30.
Next is review of ATV ordinance, City of Waterbury?
Yes, Mayor, you had asked for the copy of the ordinance for Waterbury for the council to take a look at, not necessarily for action, but for something in the future, I believe, to possibly mirror this ATV ordinance. I think it might be helpful to have or to do some additional research and wait for the new chief to come onboard in May. I think getting his perspective and help and assistance with this would be appropriate.
Next items, committee events and presentations. We have proclamation for the 7th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of Girl Scouts want to come up? This is proclamation for Girl Scouts Day, where is on March 12, 2019, March 107th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. Whereas throughout the distinguished history of the Girl Scouts has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. Whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime so they may contribute to their communities. And whereas the Girl Scouts takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness and opportunities available for them today in math, science, sports, technology, and other fields that can expand their horizons. Whereas more than 3 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 100 years of this American tradition with nearly 50 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now therefore, I, Michael Duddy, by virtue and authority vested in me as Mayor of the town of North Branford, do hereby applaud and commend Girl Scouting as made to support the leadership development of the Girls America and proudly proclaim March 12, 2019 as Girl Scout Day. This is signed by myself, along with Deputy Mayor Angeloni, Councilors Anthony Candelaora, Marie Diamond, Joseph Fawnin, George Miller, Alfred Rose, Tom Big Neil, and Thomas Zampiano. Next item, the committee events and presentations is Bill Stavissano on Earth Day.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. Earth Day is coming up, and we're going to celebrate on the 27th of April at Wall Field on Saturday. This will be our second initiative, in that we, last year, we stepped it up to an outdoor presentation inviting vendors in town, some of our own town offices that can contribute to what we do for Earth Day. I'm sure we're all aware of what's going on in the trash recycling and the whole business. And we believe that we can be a part and help with the initiative to come out and make sure everyone's aware of what they should be doing. Again, the next town council meeting is actually going to be a proclamation and hopefully have a little demonstration. But tonight, that's people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is citizens' statements, petitions, and correspondence. Any citizens' statements? Move into resignations and appointments. We have an unlisted unfinished business discussion in action, future budget planning initiative discussing discussion on possible possibility of combining town and Board of Education, Finance Departments.
This is discussed at our budget workshop on March 25, and it was suggested by the board chair, Shawna Papa-Holzer, that we form a subcommittee of Town Council and Board of Ed members, along with the superintendent and the town manager. So I would just like to say that from the Town Council, Marie Diamond and myself would like to serve on that committee. We are currently liaisons to the Board of Education and go to their budget subcommittee meetings and everything, so we would like to serve on it if there's anyone else from the council that wants to serve on it.
Yeah, I'd like to serve on it, Rose.
Okay.
Anybody else? Three people from the council? Motion to appoint three people to the...
I'll make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond, Deputy Mayor Rose Angeloni, and Al Rose to Budget Planning Initiative, on the possibility of combining Town, Board of Ed, Finance Departments.
Seconds.
Second.
Bob.
Thank you.
Any further discussions? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is property maintenance standards.
As I understand it, there was a meeting with the town attorney, and I believe there's a recommendation on his part to form a committee.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. I had a meeting on Wednesday, reviewed a bunch of material, and actually also since then have obtained a bunch of material. Recommendation for a subcommittee, I would say, would be a committee of five members. I would suggest that it be two members of the Town Council, two members of the Zoning Commission, and one member of the public at large. And then I would suggest that you maybe set dates for this subcommittee to do its function, and then we'll make any recommendations back to this body.
Well, following that, Mr. Mayor, I hope that you can go forward and make a motion that we form a subcommittee for property maintenance standards, and for my part, I'd certainly be happy to serve on that.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? It'll be a five-member committee.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Big. Could Councilor Miller repeat the motion for the clerk?
That we form a Property Maintenance Standards Commission Committee of five members, two from Town Council, two from Planning and Zoning, and one public member, consistent with the recommendations of the Town Council.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is property maintenance standards. As I understand it, there was a meeting with the town attorney, and I believe there's
a recommendation on his part to form a committee.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. I had a meeting on Wednesday, reviewed a bunch of material, and actually also since then have obtained a bunch of material. Recommendation for a subcommittee, I would say, would be a committee of five members. I would suggest that it be two members of the Town Council, two members of the Zoning Commission, and one member of the public at large. And then I would suggest that you maybe set dates for this subcommittee to do its function, and then we'll make any recommendations back to this body.
Well, following that, Mr. Mayor, I hope that you can go forward and make a motion that we form a subcommittee for property maintenance standards, and for my part, I'd certainly be happy to serve on that.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? It'll be a five-member committee.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Big. Could Councilor Miller repeat the motion for the clerk?
That we form a Property Maintenance Standards Commission Committee of five members, two from Town Council, two from Planning and Zoning, and one public member, consistent with the recommendations of the Town Council.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Mike, you'll send a letter to the Planning and Zoning?
Yeah, and then we'll hopefully get a response back, and we can tee it up for the meeting on the 16.
And then we'll try to get a member from the public.
Yeah.
Okay. And another council member. All right. Moving on, next is revision to LexisNexis appropriation.
Yes, there's a memo in there from Anthony on the suggested revision. It's a suggested motion there to modify that action that you took at the last meeting.
I'd like to make a motion, it'll be hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council works to revise the motion from the March 19, 2019 meeting relating to the North Branford Police Department's purchase of the LexisNexis software. The transfer will come from the Police Extra Duty Fund 222, go to the 2018-19 Capital Improvement Funds 467 in the amount of $7,500, and furthermore, the Town Council appropriates $7,500 from the 2018-19 Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of the LexisNexis software.
I second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Moving into new business is award of RFP 2018-2019 security cameras for Stanley Williams and TVS schools.
Yes, there's a packet or a memo in your packet from Michelle Knopwood on purchasing that goes through the selection process there, and in this situation, the low bidder had a different proposal with only a one-year warranty versus the second and third low bidder. Second low bidder was disqualified, non-responsive, with respect to lacking information in their submittal, and so the motion and recommendation is to step over the first two to go with Streamlight Communications, the third low bidder, who has purchased in or submitted with their proposal a three-year warranty, and when you factor those, the warranty in compared to Settronics, the low bidder, you have a lower cost for those security cameras. So the recommendation is to take the Streamlight Communications as the low bidder for the security cameras.
I'd like to make a motion to award RFP number eight, 2018-19, security cameras for STW and TVS schools to Streamlight Communications for a base bid of $28,579.50.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is discussion regarding beer and wine for Potato Festival, time and location.
Yes, it's a request similar to last year, in which they would like to hold an event, and it obviously needs the permission and authorization of the Town Council, which took action back in 2016 to allow for this provision when they amended the ordinance, and so that is a copy in your packet, and suggested motion to allow the Poco Festival to hold the event on Sunday. I believe Lauren Monroe is in the audience if there are any questions you may have, but it will follow the same event that they had last year. I think there's a slight deviation in time, but she could speak to that.
Evening, Council. Actually, the time is, as we know, we're looking for three hours for the actual tasting, but a little league way instead of, in case the shore health doesn't expect a time, so the actual tasting will be the three hours. What we're actually looking for this year is to move the beer and wine up onto the actual festival site opposed to down below the other field. With a snow fence, Brandy's Public Works, a lot of stuff around it, this is for purposes and purposes, and that's just that we come over this one. We're looking for that one Sunday for three hours of the actual event to the other grounds.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the Poco Festival organizers to hold a beer and wine tasting event on Sunday, August 4, 2019, on town property, granting them an exemption under Chapter 88-13K of the Town Ordinance, and any exemptions granted by the council shall be subject to the provisions of the Connecticut General Statutes relating to the sale and distribution of alcoholic beverages.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
I'm staying.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is review of specifications for bid number eight, 2018-2019, supply and install wood guard rail fencing at Northford Park. Lauren, is that you?
Yes.
Can you give us a little?
Do you have a question?
Can you give us a little description on what it's replacing or what it's for?
Across the front of Northford Park, the whole fence has started to deteriorate. Some of the rails are missing. There's been accidents with people falling, sure of the railing not being there, so we're looking to replace the whole fence. And we're going down the side as well. It's a great...
So is this going to be installed by Public Works? Is this just for material, or what is...
That's the whole thing.
Is it chain link? Is it wood? What is it?
It's wood. It's a wood guard rail. Instead of the split rail fence. The six parts are...
Okay, by opposed with the wood rail across that? Because one single rail, right?
Yeah, and we put it off, and then they've taken the best stuff, but we're trying to take it down.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid specs for bid number eight, 2018-19, supply and install wood guard rail fencing at Northford Park.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
All right, next item, citizens' statements and petitions under Town Council.
I just have one thing, and it's in regards to the committee that we're forming with the Board of Ed. I see the board chair is here right now, so I just wanted to see if we could possibly get our first meeting date set and just figure out if, you know, does the Board of Ed have to appoint members to this committee also? So it would have to be after your April 12 meeting, okay? So if you can give us dates and times that you might, that work for you guys, that we can get together to start on it. The first one would probably be an organizational type meeting to kind of set our timeframe and what we're looking for. So it could be like before our council meeting or a Board of Ed meeting. We need a little bit more often than you guys do, so if that works for you, that would be fine. Okay. All right, thank you.
Next is adjournment. Somebody move to adjourn? Anthony? Bob? Second?
Second.
Yep. Second. Everybody in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed? We call the budget hearing for 2019-2020 to order, special town council meeting for Tuesday, April 2, North Branford Intermountain School Cafeteria, starting at 8:01 PM. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of Christians, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
I'm staying.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is review of specifications for bid number eight, 2018-2019, supply and install wood guard rail fencing at Northford Park. Lauren, is that you?
Yes.
Can you give us a little?
Do you have a question?
Can you give us a little description on what it's replacing or what it's for?
Across the front of Northford Park, the whole fence has started to deteriorate. Some of the rails are missing. There's been accidents with people falling, sure of the railing not being there, so we're looking to replace the whole fence. And we're going down the side as well. It's a great...
So is this going to be installed by Public Works? Is this just for material, or what is...
That's the whole thing.
Is it chain link? Is it wood? What is it?
It's wood. It's a wood guard rail. Instead of the split rail fence. The six parts are...
Okay, by opposed with the wood rail across that? Because one single rail, right?
Yeah, and we put it off, and then they've taken the best stuff, but we're trying to take it down.
Okay.
We put it off, and then they've taken the best stuff, but we're trying to take it down.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid specs for bid number eight, 2018-19, supply and install wood guard rail fencing at Northford Park.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is discussion regarding beer and wine for Potato Festival, time and location.
Yes, it's a request similar to last year, in which they would like to hold an event, and it obviously needs the permission and authorization of the Town Council, which took action back in 2016 to allow for this provision when they amended the ordinance, and so that is a copy in your packet, and suggested motion to allow the Poco Festival to hold the event on Sunday. I believe Lauren Monroe is in the audience if there are any questions you may have, but it will follow the same event that they had last year. I think there's a slight deviation in time, but she could speak to that.
Evening, Council. Actually, the time is, as we know, we're looking for three hours for the actual tasting, but a little league way instead of, in case the shore health doesn't expect a time, so the actual tasting will be the three hours. What we're actually looking for this year is to move the beer and wine up onto the actual festival site opposed to down below the other field. With a snow fence, Brandy's Public Works, a lot of stuff around it, this is for purposes and purposes, and that's just that we come over this one. We're looking for that one Sunday for three hours of the actual event to the other grounds.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the Poco Festival organizers to hold a beer and wine tasting event on Sunday, August 4, 2019, on town property, granting them an exemption under Chapter 88-13K of the Town Ordinance, and any exemptions granted by the council shall be subject to the provisions of the Connecticut General Statutes relating to the sale and distribution of alcoholic beverages.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Candelaora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Councilor Big Neil?
Here.
And Councilor Zampiano?
Here.
Next item is presentation of fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Town manager?
Okay, good evening. Is this working? Everyone here?
Yes.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Great. I'm Mike Wallace, I'm the town manager, and I'm going to walk through the budget presentation for our fiscal year 2019-2020. First, I'd like to kind of quick snapshot on the budget process. You know, this process basically sets priorities, which allocate resources, which is what we have to do each and every year. I start the process off with doing requests to the department head, city council head, making adjustments, and submit those proposals to the Town Council. The Town Council then views proposal that I make, that's not etched in stone, that's my ideas. We hold workshops and public hearing, and this is what happens tonight, is the public hearing process that kicks it off, and then we go through a series of budget deliberations, budget adjustments, cuts, whatever you want to call them, and culminates in a referendum On top of that, unfunded mandates, a lot of discussion and talks about teachers' pensions, MS4, useful solid waste and other things that come up that are unfunded mandates that municipalities, and we have to do the best we can to account for that, to make up for those shortfalls. I'm not sure I have it in the slide this year, but in the book, on the front page of the yellow books that are handed out, the teachers' pension, I think the hit this year is eight, just from the year, eighty-three thousand dollars that municipalities are now, in particular North Grandford's share for the teachers' pension is allocated with town budgets. My hearing to the state is going to ratchet up, unfortunately, over the next two years. So it's going to start climbing significantly in the third year, and that's what the projections are. So a onslaught of these unfunded mandates, and what we do in terms of local issues is, you know, we have town services to maintain and infrastructures to maintain, and those is a cost to the business for that. So there's pressure on the departments to, you know, increase down, to meet the resident service demands and the new tasks mandated by the state. Do the best we can. Here, there's a snapshot of a trend. You know, just five years ago, we were at a high of nine million, and it's shrinking every year. So, I mean, obviously, we had some fluctuation in the last two, three years, but overall, it's coming down, and I think that's the trend that's lighting on the wall, so to speak, with the state doing it. I don't know when we'll get that trend reversed. I don't have a crystal ball, but I can tell you that there is a good side to the fact that while we have difficult decisions to make, we have a good solid base. Our financial house, I believe, is in order, based on our audit report, we're in good shape. We have a healthy fund balance. We're addressing the issues from the state, and we're fortunate enough this year to have slight grandest growth that is positive, better than we've seen in many years. So difficult decisions go into this, and of course, difficult decisions go, you know, going forward for the town council. This is the starting point where I put the budget together and handoff to the council. So here's what we're looking at for the highlights. Total budget expenditures goes in these 2.47% currently as the town government operations, 1%, for the education, 0.44, and again, another bright spot, debt service coming down, so minus 4.4% of the overall. Close budget breakdown, general government, there are fifteen million, so one five pro. Debt service, you know, increases almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, helps us education, 2.4%, capital improvements, significant there, and I'm going to speak to that a little bit later in another slide. But there was an effort by the council, as there have been the last few years, to ramp up, to get to almost the equivalent of one mil, and I'll have that number approximately 1.2 million is one million. So that we can address those long-term financial project, long-term. So revenues, finance, endless growth, over 1.4% this year. So it really helped out to the bottom line when we have growth like that. Before, we had an EBIT growth of less than, I think, half a percent. We were positive, we had been positive, but this year was a pretty good year for a grand this increase of 1.4%. If we can maintain that, I can guarantee that, that's, I think, it's a good number, it helps us. Anytime we're positive, the grandest growth is what helps as well, possibly. So unfortunately, you know, the reliance on taxes, the decrease in state revenue coming back to the town, you can see the trend, it hasn't been good, but it's leveling off, and again, we'll do the best we can to allocate the scheduled resources. So financing the budget, use of fund balances, I mentioned from the weather report, the fund balance is a healthy 16%, unassigned fund balance. So there's a large number on the right for fiscal year 20, two million includes a figure that I placed in there as my recommendation to step down some of that unassigned fund balance to one-time capital improvements, as is there in the budget. It's not the council idea, it's my idea, to try to take care of some large capital expenses, and I choose to look at fire equipment, large ticketing, power for engines that cost, you know, a million dollars, a million or two, or eight hundred thousand for the engine. This obviously is a decision that's going to be made by the council, and it could easily go to any other direction that they want to go in. I don't recommend it be used for the operation budget, because then you're going to have a hole to fill all year, because it's most appropriate to use a one-time capital improvement. So interest income is another opportunity for us, has improved in the last couple of years. Seventeen, eighteen budget year, we had ninety thousand. Last year, a hundred and eighty, because of interest rate economy, we're anticipating the rise close to two hundred thousand on interest revenue, that's a big help. Permanent revenues are still rather flat, actually, actually, on the decline, from two hundred and forty down to two oh one, we anticipate that. Real estate, claims tax, also expected to remain flat, we expect slightly from one thirty, one hundred and thirty thousand to what we estimate to be about ninety thousand. So anytime those numbers go up, obviously, they help the bottom line. Are we adding slide? Okay. That was the revenue summary, just a breakdown of where those revenue are at. We move on to expenditures. So general balance, as I mentioned, eighteen million, so one five twelve, 1% rate, so a hundred and fifty-four thousand, eighty-six. Overall, departments have requested more than that, and we're at five, three hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one. You know, again, funding mandates, wages, benefits, maintenance service, funding debt service, you know, the plan for capital items, it's a balancing act, right? Here's the expenditure summary, some of the cost centers. Personnel, obviously, is going to make up a majority of the revenue budget, eight million. Vehicle supplies, practical services, capital outlay, benefits, insurance, obviously, taxes, personnel costs, and debt service. So as I mentioned, debt service was at a high of four million last year, it's coming down to eight thousand dollars, and we're doing what we can to stay on track of capital improvements, so we're not behind the eight ball, and so to speak, and we talked about those, those time, yeah, to maintain, prolong the life of those roads. It's a trip for us to do so than having to come in and reconstruct the entire neighborhood or roadway, we can simply follow the maintenance schedule. So that's another graph that should come out, I apologize. Capital improvements, again, I mentioned, council ramping up to what is the equivalent of almost a bill, budgeted funds, unassigned budgets, unassigned fund balance can be used safely. In my estimation, again, the council may disagree and may not want to touch that at all, that's a pariah, maybe want to save that for rainy day, but it's based on what the managers hold as a rule of thumb, holding 10%, we can safely use some of that money for one-time purchases. But one point two million allows us to do wire for the server, public works, road improvements, small repairs and equipment, light, so things to do. So, yeah, I think I just said that needs to be addressed, capital improvement, wanting to stay on top of the goals, you know, we'll keep our head above water and try to maintain and keep the community looking way down, and traffic. So, the residence parks and facility repairs, equipment replacement are all important, and important to have a scheduled order. All right, debt service, as I mentioned, has fallen off, in fact, continues to come down, and I know the slide didn't show, but at some point, I think we were at a high of six million or four more in debt service, and now we got zero over year, so looking at a reduction of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that trend continues to go less, council decides to add any money to this list. So we get to what would be those tax rates, you know, an increase of half a mil as proposed right now, means the mill rating go from thirty-three point three nine to fifty-four, eight high, nothing was done, and it's accepted to be open, but that's hard to double the case. So, again, this is just in the process, a starting point for the council to look at. So how does that impact the taxpayer, like to put in a, you know, a perspective on ownership and what the odd pocketable piece will create, and try to model a colonial and home, or mansion, so the colonial would be a hundred and twenty-one, the capital top would be a hundred and fifty-one. So one mil, as I said, equals one million, twenty-fourty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-one. So, yeah, it's an opportunity to set priorities and directions in the town, and it's not easy to jump, there are a lot of competing requests, as I said, that come in and can't afford to do anything, so we have to prioritize and pick the best ones that we can and people. To that, I will pull over and allow Scott, superintendent of school, to jump in.
And next on the agenda is the Board of Education.
Is this the same one you handed out at the workshop?
This is the town one, it's basically the same.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I mean, I'm good, I don't have a problem with that.
Good evening. Do you have any? So my path is correct, Michael, for ten or twelve dollars per month, everyone will walk out of here happy? Is that what you're saying? Is that how it breaks down?
I don't know if they'd be happy, Scott.
They would be happy, but really happy. Sounds like he is scared. We presented our budget last week to the town council. The original superintendent's budget was at 3.26, it was pared down to 2.18, and adjusted to 2.44 due to the teachers' pension. It's a thin budget, it's a status quo budget, okay, it's moving our existing staff forward for next year. There are only a few new positions, one of the positions is a grade five, full-time teacher for one year, a part-time social worker, a paraprofessional, and a couple of assistant athletic coaches here at MBIS. So you're probably looking at a total of one full-time, one part-time, a paraprofessional, and a couple of coaches, that's where we're at for this budget. Mr. Nick, the clinic, who will walk through enrollment trends, some of the challenges that we're faced with on funded fund mandates, as Mike Falls mentioned, some of those challenges, and how we have continued to be fiscally responsible over time, we're bringing a budget forward to service our students here in Northford. So that being said, just give me a minute.
Thank you. Did you hear that? It's okay. It's good. It's on. It's on. Okay. So this is our current budget, thirty-one million, six forty-seven. The status quo, which is basically just moving everything forward, new costs, maintaining existing programs, that was 2.18. Superintendent's request included an additional 1.08%. The board reduced that back to the status quo budget, except there were some differences in the way the personnel was allocated between the status quo and the final request. And then at the bottom, I just added a, this is why you will see that some of the paperwork you had before doesn't match the numbers in the book, and that's because the TRB contribution was added to the tune of about a quarter of a percent. So the increase is largely due to certified salaries and non-certified salaries. By eliminating a position in anticipation of retirement, the board was able to include the 1.45 in new teaching positions. So the total increase in certified staff is 3.36 to 61, very close to what it was in the status quo budget. It also includes funding for all positions, except partial grant funding for the pre-k teacher, Jerome Harrison, and a Jerome Harrison classroom teacher, those come from the Smart Start grant and the Title III. Non-certified salaries adds another 0.82%, and that does include replacing about thirty-six thousand dollars in lost Title I funding. We had originally, two years ago, we got about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for Title I, this year we got more like seventy-seven. Health insurance actually decreases a bit. The health insurance for active employees would decrease about a half a percent. There's a little bit of addition for the new positions, but the calculation, the change to the safe plan and the way that impacts retirement benefits actually increases the, that part of the account by 0.4%. Electrical usage, I reduce, and there's also reduction in sewer and water. Transportation costs would have been down to the base contract, but there were a couple of other types of transportation, either for special ed or for HOAC, and they result in an increase. So there's a net increase of about thirty thousand dollars. Liability insurance is expected to be over budget this year, and it's increased by, so what I did is I took where we expect to end up this year, and increased it by another six percent based on the recognition of our insurance brokers. Outside placements are up about a hundred thousand dollars. This does not include the excess cost grants, so they are funded at 100% in this budget. There would have been a decrease in professional services, had the behavior analysis that was requested by the superintendent stayed in the budget, but because that was removed, the professional services have been added back in, and there's a small change in energy costs, expecting oil to go down a bit to match what we asked to go up some. As I mentioned before, we have increased instructional supplies by about thirty-four thousand dollars to replace the Title I funding. And in order to balance the budget, to get back to the status quo number, we also reduced the building budget expenditures by about twenty-six thousand dollars. And then we had enrollment, which is shown on the next slide, is going to decrease by a net of thirty students. It was originally in the number, if you saw the other number, it was fifteen students because we had a second pre-k classroom included. This takes it back down to one, and therefore, we have a drop of, anticipated drop of thirty students. So staffing requests, actually, these, Scott already went through. The staffing requests that were in superintendent's requests that are not in the board's requests are the second preschool teacher and paraprofessional that created the second preschool classroom, the behavior analysis. There was another literacy paraprofessional at TVES and one special ed paraprofessional. This is just a little bit of a summary of those things that have been funded through the MBIS school improvement grant. So if you've seen some new faces or seen some activity, we did hire two instructional coaches, one for English language arts and one for math. And we also had money in this or in the grant for half of a reading specialist. We have some stipends for additional duties. I won't go through everything, but so there's some additional professional development, some additional stipends, but largely is those two coaches that we have been looking for at MBIS and were able to get through the grant funding. The headcount slide is a little bit busy, so I'm not going to go through that in great detail, but the net is up two and a half over last, or current year. As I often do, I add, I put in here just some of the things that we've done in the last few years to balance the budget. So in this case, we eliminated three certified positions and transferred funding for paraprofessionals to Title I. We eliminated a grade-two teacher the year before, an additional math teacher, freshman sports, and also some paraprofessional funding. And I'm not going to read this whole list. You can see, in sixteen seventeen, we did do a number of, did make a number of changes in staffing in order to achieve the level that we needed to achieve. For budget consequences of budget reduction, the rule of thumb is if it's involuntary transfers, it takes about six certified staff members to create a change of one percent budget. Obviously, the donors are much less if you have retirements because their salaries then be higher and they're, you know, paying things like unemployment. And finally, as Scott before, it's a catalog.
I just want to, just a little more detail to the one point five FDs that we have requested, the grade-five additional teacher, it's a one-year position. That position will be eliminated, although we have an increase in enrollment. Our fifth-grade classes would be approximately twenty-six. And the team felt that we certainly want to focus on trying to get those class sizes down to twenty-two for that one, that one year, and then group it then roll into the middle school the following year. The point five social worker position, we have a shared social worker right now with our two elementary schools. We have seen a significant increase in our student population with social emotional needs. Our abilities to service these children and families has been stressed over the last several years. We spend a great deal of time due to situations that are beyond our control, and we are certainly seeing the impact of what I feel is it's a crisis in our society. We have many grandparents raising grandchildren that are living with them, and we spend a great deal of time supporting them. The part-time social worker was reduced from a full-time position, but would be a stopgap to try to assist some of our youngest K-two children at Jerome Harrison.
And then, so finally, to look at the area of capital, the board's request included some additional funding for the high school feasibility study, funding for the elevator upgrade at the high school. And so those were, those were the eight priority items. The big priorities are things that need to be done, but realistically, could wait another year with some work that needs to be done, the air conditioning system at Jerome Harrison, and the additional funding for repairs of the exterior at the auditorium. And finally, some work on both asbestos and unit ventilators in Tucutacan Valley and the district paving reserve, and frankly, that might be used also in Tucutacan Valley. But those are things that really are matters of ongoing maintenance, and they don't necessarily have a major impact in any given year, but at some point, they're going to need to be done.
Can I just...
I'm done.
At the last budget meeting with the council, there was the question of the elevator, and we did, we did an estimate for a new elevator, the upgrade of eighty-seven, five-seven-five. That was for the repair. The cost came in at seventy-two and change, and then we looked at additional costs, approximately fifteen thousand dollars for electrical and other service work to get it up. A new elevator by the same company was quoted at a hundred thousand dollars, and then probably ballpark another fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to retro to put it in and do that type of work. So you're only going to probably, for a brand-new, one hundred and twenty versus the eighty-seven, five-seven-five. And I have those two estimates I'll pass out to you tonight, so you have the two documents that we're going to be... Are there any questions at this time? Councilors who want to do this, I'm sure you're all set. Okay, thank you.
And move on to the public hearing for fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Anybody from the public? Just have to state your name and address for their record.
Hello, folks. Dan, on Seventy-Seventh Chitsey Drive, North Cranford, talking on behalf of economic development.
Elizabeth Kaplan, in the four Westmont Road, speaking on behalf of economic development. So, you know, I heard what Mike said regarding the budget, obviously, what Scott said regarding the budget. We have people from fire and police, the trainee's department, parking rack, and what economic development does is business retention and expansion to help all the departments and our taxpayers. So just a few of the things that we want to talk about that have been accomplished in Roger's short time with us has been so many things, and I think you're seeing that, and Mike sees it, and I hope the public's been seeing that. But his ability to market not only throughout the region, but internationally. He has many, many contacts. He's bringing in people to talk about dance manufacturing. We have a tremendous manufacturing shortage in state, and he's been talking with Scott. He's been talking with companies such as Honeywell to help invest in our students and possibly an adult program to help lighten the load a little bit with dance manufacturing in the state. And again, he's working with the Department of Labor. He's working with a number of employment agencies to help stop the short gap. Who else? Say, oh, talk about businesses in town. For example, the other night at our meeting, he mentioned that there was a business he and Carrie got windowed, wanted to leave. They got in front of these folks, small business, a manufacturer on Twenty-two, and they are going to be asking the business to put together a plan. They want to expand their footprint. They want to stay in town. They weren't quite sure how to do it. So they went, you know, this is what he does, and he's able to handle a company through the process, and they do not leave our community. They can expand. They can hire more people. That's what Roger has been able to do. As passionate as we all are as Economic Development Commission people, we have seven people, we could not do what he has been able to do. So we appreciate your, your support of a transition. He works more than the part-time hours that he has allotted. We hope to expand his hours next year, and we think with that, and the networking he's able to do, and all the ideas and the branding, and Dan's going to talk in a second, we think his salary is without a doubt is in process of translating to offsetting the money in his salary for tax dollars and net sum times a lot. So it's a process we told you was going to take a little bit of time, but we're already seeing the benefits of what he's been able to bring to our community.
And I'll be brief, but you know, now the, we have the advantage of having a contact for business to interact with the town directly. Therefore, we can more immediately fulfill their needs when it comes to employment, footprint changes, expansion, retention needs. Now the town can really address, correctly address these for the businesses. And on top of that, he's started marketing our town worldwide. You know, we have a video program that'll be coming out in conjunction with Tucutacan TV and other marketing, regional marketing initiatives that he's started thinking about and undertaking. So just want to, you know, show you the value that, you know, he has brought to our town and support.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, Chuck, Chuck.
Yeah, you got it.
My name is Laura Garrett, five hundred Village Street. I'm from the Department of Fire Commissioners. I was also a captain, a fire officer for twenty years. I just want to say, you know, over the last twenty, twenty-five years, money keeps getting taken away from the fire department. Our budgets get cut, and you want to know why we come to you and the large numbers that we come to you. And every year, the achievement's forced to be less and less. At some point, we are going to have a cash drop, equipment failure, that is going to affect the residents, it's going to affect firefighters, and it's going to be, you know, it's going to be fixed. We save taxpayers a lot of money every year by not having a fire department. You know, you're talking pensions, you're talking, you know, salaries, medical, all that kind of stuff. We're talking over three or four percent hours for the fire department. I don't have to pay those taxes. I don't think anyone else does either. You know, we do a lot of work for free. The men and women at the department do a hell of a job for this town. They do it for nothing. They do it any time of the day, any time of the night. There's somebody there for you. You can't keep cutting and cutting and cutting and expect us not to have problems with equipment, expect us not to come to you to ask for water, to want some money for large pieces of equipment that needs to be replaced, that are over thirty years old. And I really think what it comes down to is what would happen if it was one of your houses that was on fire and our trucks couldn't get to it, or our trucks got here on water because they're all surface, they need to be fixed, they need to be replaced. What if it was your family member stuck in a car, a car accident, that we couldn't get to because of equipment failure or inability for equipment to function? At that point, it may be the first to do that. Just saying.
You got it.
Sure.
A little round of applause for Mr. O'Rourke, our executive. Could you hear the first part? You heard, you heard the first part, Mr. O'Rourke?
Good evening. I'm Phil Seward, I'm the bar chief. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
I don't need a mic.
I don't need a mic. I'm right up here. So I say that, can you hear me now? Because it's really something that the town council needs to take to heart. On page one forty-eight of your yellow books, under capital, under the heading Public Safety, there was a proposal to put an additional signing cast site in for the police, fire, and public works communications system. It has been submitted to the town council year after year after year. It has not been funded. The public safety communications in this community is most challenging. I have a pretty diverse background, so I can talk about electronics and radio communications. So the big rock in the middle, and nobody can get across from one side of the town to the other, that rock in the middle presents a significant challenge to communicate throughout our twenty-six square miles. And that involves both police, fire, EMS, and public works radio networks. If you look at the submission, the bar requested for one hundred thousand, and then you look at the next column, it is zeroed out. What I'm asking the town council this evening to consider is take that zero and put one hundred thousand dollars that in that line item. It is critical, most critical, to the police officers, to the firefighters, to EMS personnel, and public works employees that a reliable, uninterruptible communication system is installed to allow our personnel to be able to talk to dispatch. So can you hear me now? It's no joke. I can't tell you how many times the dispatcher responds back to our units, "I can't hear you." The signal's still in. Well, put it this way, in a life-threatening situation, that's not what a police officer, firefighter, EMS responder, or public works employee doing the greatest job in town roads in the middle of a storm or in the middle of a critical incident needs to hear. That's unacceptable in 2019. I fully support the enhancements that we need for our public safety communication system. We have worked tremendously with Acting Chief Jerry Lovelace and Acting Lieutenant Sean Anderson and the Board of Police Commissioners in a very cohesive manner to review the communication system and our infrastructure. The infrastructure that exists today was a result of a federal grant that started back in 2009. It was the tip of the iceberg back then. The system has outgrown itself. We need to improve communications to improve the level of safety to our emergency responders. Please consider that. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Conroy of 67 Caputo Road, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. This is my third year standing up here advocating for our Board of Education and supporting our emergency and public services. As a town council, you are doing these groups a disservice by not supporting their budgets. Right costs more every year. Costs go up, and the town council voting to not invest forces the Board of Education Emergency Services to simply do more with less while our costs go up to do these things. The common goal of the stakeholders should be to work hard to make our community stronger. Due to cuts and lack of budget increases, when simply things get more expensive each year, causes the focus to get shifted to where it not, where it doesn't need to be. Instead, these officials and these leaders are trying to find ways to get grants and funding versus finding ways to better educate and empower these forces and in our future. The common goal should be focused on learning and student growth and public safety. Instead, it gets shifting to all these other methods of trying to fund these major critical sources. Our U is fighting and struggling right now, not only just socially and behaviorally, but with technology advances that are advancing faster than our educational systems can keep up with, because one, we're worried about funding the current structure versus investing into the future. I hate public speaking, I apologize. The education system here is amazing despite the obstacles placed in front of it with the budget restrictions. Our town is being recognized with this lip sync video because of the individuals that gather our communities to make a difference. That is an accident. This town is amazing, and I am so honored to live here. I feel it's a privilege, and I can't say enough about how amazing this town is, and the small town that it is with such a huge heart. What's sad is we know you could do more if it had the adequate funding to support the needed growth. Town council, you were elected to represent us, not ignore us. We are the parents of the students that attend these schools and took the time out of our lives because these issues are important to us. You won't stop hearing from us until we see the investments of our tax dollars spent where we know it needs to be needed. Unlike last year, you can avoid enough more of our community by doing the right thing now. Our future is important to us and our children. Investing in these critical resources such as education and emergency services should be a priority for you. Schools are simply being asked to do more with less, although of course, there's nothing simple about that. You can be part of the solution to helping us invest in our future by voting yes for Board of Education Emergency Services budgets. Please be part of the solution of vote yes. Thank you.
What else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Call a favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned.